We're ready.
I think we're on the record, yes. Welcome, everybody. This is the City Council meeting for the City of Bonny Lake for July 26, 2022. First things first, let's stand and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope everybody is hand-wing weather that we have. Like I mentioned prior to the meeting, we do have a pretty big agenda we're going to try to get through as quickly as possible. Madam Court, could you take roll call, please?
Mayor McCullough?
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin?
She's on vacation.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton?
Here.
Councilmember McFlimmon?
Present.
Councilmember Swatman?
Present.
And Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All right, as just stated, oh, Councilmember.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Baldwin.
Baldwin, yes, right there. Okay. With that, I don't think there's any discussion. And do we have a vote? All in favor of excusing Councilmember Baldwin for her vacation, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays, so Councilmember Baldwin is excused for our meeting. We do have an agenda modification. There's an agenda item that Mr. Johnstone requested, Item C, under full issues be removed. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Negative.
Second. Any discussion on the matter? All right, let's move to a vote. All in favor of, let's get the specific one on the record. This would be Item C, which would be AB 22102, Resolution 3066. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
That's correct.
Yeah, that would be a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to approve the purchase of racking from Raymond Handling Concepts for the Public Services Center. All in favor of removing this from our discussion items tonight?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, say aye, sorry. Any nays? All right, no nays, so Item C has been removed. Would that be rusted racking?
That was a rusty rack.
Now, Raymond is a different company, but rusty rag guys are something we're attempting to remove as we speak.
I hope we get favorable quotes from rusty rags.
There's also a Mr. Racks up in Renton as well.
All right, so let's move on to public hearings, citizen comments, and correspondence. I don't believe we have any public hearings tonight, so we'll go on to citizen comments. As most of you in the audience know, but I'll explain it anyway, this is your time to address the council on any city business. You have five minutes, so please state your name and address for the record, please.
Council Mayor, past Councilmember Dan Decker, have a tour of 170 East Bonny Lake, Washington. What causes inflation? Do any of you know what causes inflation? Hope you do, because you're a council and you need to understand what that means, inflation. Inflation is one of the most important things that can happen to money, other than getting it, of course, you know, that point. But the point here is, I understand that the council is in a process of creating some inflation, bringing forward a B and O tax, business occupation. Inflation is caused by spending money. The more money you spend, the more inflation there is. The less items that are on the counter to be bought that is needed, the higher the price on it goes. That's inflation. And so what I'm saying is, a B and O tax will cause things at the store to go up in price, creating inflation. So, I understand this council wants a B and O tax, at least, I don't know, the whole council, I can't say the council, at least one person on the council is attempting to bring forward a B and O tax. I'm hoping that does end in a failure, because all that's going to do is create more inflation, and we don't need inflation. Our wonderful President of the United States, I call him Pinocchio Joe because he is a joke, has already created more inflation than has been around for over 40 years. How did he do that? Oh, well, let's see, he shut down the oil mines, shut down the oil-producing companies, he shut down, shut down, shut down everything, and now we have what's called gas inflation, five, six, seven, nine dollars, depending on where you live, per gallon. That's inflation, and that's not a joke, nor is it funny. So, anyway, Pinocchio Joe has done his job, I'm hoping you guys don't, and thank you for that. And I just wanted to mention one thing about that proclamation that was read the other week, where the council said they didn't want their name put to it. If you read that proclamation, your name was put to it at least four different times. We, the government, we, the city government, we, 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 that is not I as an individual, that is you as part of that proclamation. So, it doesn't matter if you put your name to it or not, you're part of it. So, the best way to deal with that is get that proclamation rescinded and have it rewritten so that you're not involved in it. But if you want to leave it like it is, that's your business. Me personally, I don't care either way. Thank you very much, council.
I think, Mr. Decker. Is there anybody else for the good of the order?
Hi, my name is Leslie Saunders, 2020, Church Lake Drive, East Bonny Lake, Washington, 9291. Kind of nervous, I've never done this. I'm a board member of Church Lake Maintenance Group, our private three-acre park around Church Lake. I'd like to comment on two topics: rezoning to R2 middle housing grant in the need of sidewalks in our area. I moved here 32 years ago. It's a wonderful community and recreational area. I've seen tons of growth. We only had a Dairy Queen. We have all these other places. And a lot of people in my area didn't even live their year round, they just came for vacation. I have several questions. Why was our area being selected to be rezoned to R2 by this Church Lake Maintenance? Also, in the map it shows on the information, it doesn't just include, it includes all of our Church Lake, but it then includes the Allen York waterfront and in the Ball Field. Well, they're not residential, so I'm not sure why that map includes those areas. That's on the stuff you got at the last meeting. The infrastructure, how are roads going to keep up with this type of development? Can you pick an alternate location, another area in Bonny Lake for your middle housing grant and goals? How can you justify to increase density to an already full and established area? The area called Church Lake Maintenance consists of 331 lots and a three-acre private park on the lake. We already have six duplexes that were built prior to 2008. We only have a handful of lots undeveloped. We also have single-family homes with multifamily living in them. Our area was created 60 years ago and has no room for more people and cars. We are at full capacity. People live there year-round now. Our park only holds 20 cars and 12 trailers for the 331 member. With all the growth in the area, there's only a couple ways out of our area. One is to go down the end of our, onto 214. We usually go straight up to West half, but we've noticed in a lot of it probably has to do with Costco and everything there, that with all the growth, we can, we usually have to wait to make a left onto West half. And it usually, it's not like one or two cars, you have a lot of cars coming from home. So, it's getting harder and harder to deal with. We do not have the infrastructure for more vehicles on our roads. In a briefing memorandum dated June 22, 2022, from Jason Sullivan, dates on page 3, the ordinance 1297, which changed back in 2008, the Church Lake area did receive a positive recommendation from the planning commission. Our community was requesting this also, they wanted to see that on our what, wasn't like the city wanted it, it was our community, I don't remember how we did it, petitions are heavily 2000. In regard to the sidewalks, I'd like to request sidewalks, at least on one side of the road. That was the one thing when I moved here and I noticed right away we didn't have sidewalks. It came from an area with sidewalks, I had children. But I figured they'd eventually come in 32 years. I wish I would have spoke out three decades ago. Having no sidewalks is a safety issue for people, children, dogs, and vehicles. We also have culverts and ditches in narrow areas to walk. City has at least approximately eight feet on each side of the road, so we have a large area there. We have a small area to walk in.
Well, thank you, Madam.
I just would like to know, how I would get any answers to the inquiries?
You did modify. And Councilmember Evans wishes to make a comment.
Only on the time, she said she was representing the nature way. Is that correct? I just didn't want to.
Okay, yeah, we, there's nine of us on the board, we're all looking. I am one of the board members. A couple of neighbors actually asked me to ask some of these questions.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is that, that's normally, and, you know, thanks for comments, without talking this clearly, normally that group effect, because is that where the group is actually present? Because otherwise you end up with numerous citizens that are a member of a group that come up and they're instantly dead within ten minutes. I just want to be fair, clearly be fair, because I don't know what the rules are on it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be one person that speaks for a group that's all here, but it's ultimately up to the council.
Yeah, you can always give them more time. I just clearly want to be fair to everyone, because, you know, often people want to criticize us, and I want to hear them as much as I want to hear people that want to, you know.
That is a deep. I just want to make sure, yeah, she stated she was representing it. I just want to make sure we.
Absolutely, and we were going to move, and let's do it for, oh, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion that we give her in five minutes.
In seconds.
She stated she was.
Okay, very good. Any discussion on the matter? Guess not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, you get to continue.
I don't do much public speaking, but I paid time this at four and a half, so I apologize.
No worries.
Maybe I tried to be a little more relaxed. I walk my dog daily. I have almost been hit at least a dozen times, which isn't too many for 32 years, but didn't always have dogs. Are sidewalks, are sidewalks part of infrastructure? When we moved here, we paid $700 in taxes, and we, and I have a really small house, but I am on the lake in 1990. We now pay $8,000. We're getting taxed out, and eventually we'll need to move because we're more on a fixed income. Luckily, we have a little IRA to pull out to pay those taxes. So, how do I get answers to the questions and inquiries? And I just wanted to repeat my questions, not too redundant. Why was our area being selected? Why does it include that area that's part of Allen York and the ballpark waterfront? And the infrastructure, how are roads going to keep up with this type of development? Can you pick an alternate location, another area in Bonny Lake for your middle housing grant? And how can you justify to increase density in an already full and established area? Can we work on getting sidewalks?
And, yes, Madam, I can put a name to a face, that would be Mr. Sullivan right there raising his hand, and he would be the person who could answer your question the best.
Okay, I didn't see who was raising it.
Oh, that, that, that's Jason Sullivan.
He can answer all of them, or?
Yes, and then we also have Ryan Johnstone, he's our Public Services Director. And if you could remind me where exactly we are starting with sidewalks. I know part of Church Lake Road is part of.
Church Lake Drive.
Oh, Church Lake Drive, okay, that's probably.
Our community is Church Lake Drive.
Yeah, we're proposing to put sidewalks in various locations throughout the city, but I'd like to take a moment to give it to you. We're done here.
Okay.
And start to get more information from our boardroom.
No, thanks.
Okay, and thank you so much, and I hope to be able to do this again. I wish I would have done it.
Just one question. You said that only the Dairy Queen was up here, I thought the BLT was up here.
Oh, BLT, BLT Dairy Queen, now we're here. There was a couple.
Glad you came, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, then, let's move on. And looks like we don't have any correspondents, so next would be committee reports. Let's start with Finance Committee, please.
I just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance Committee met today at 5:00 PM upstairs. We have a personnel update. We have four people starting August 1st, Brian Samuel, HR Manager, Matthew Freely, PC Network Specialist, Vladimir Shedrin, Building Inspector 1, and Caitlin Forsberg, Permit Technician. There's a receipt of applications for Manus Walker 2, Accounting Specialist, cashier, police officer, and PM Site Assistance, and Public Works Seasonal Laborers. We had a discussion on our business and action items. For AB 22105, authorizing Judge Campbell's assignment interagency agreement between Washington State Administrative Offices of the Courts and Bonny Lake Municipal Court for audiovisual grant funding. That's a $30,000 grant, and it will cover all of the audiovisual stuff for courts that they're being able to kind of power with, being heard, audiovisual wise. It will also make an effect for our council meetings as well.
Would it cover all the eating hours?
Right. That is a no. We approved our minutes, we had no discussion, business license revenue. That was our meeting.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next, we have Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our recent meeting, we discussed several items of business. They included the racking resolution that you have moved to here because we had bidding on it. We also looked at transportation improvement list, that's also on your agenda this evening at the full council level, so we go ahead and have questions. We approved our minutes, and those were our items of business.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. All right, next we have Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Meeting will meet on Tuesday, August 9th, 3:30 PM on the second floor conference room.
Oh, right, thank you, Councilmember Evans. Now, I've got other reports here, do we have other reports, Madam Court? Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Oh, yes, Deputy Mayor, sorry. I just pointed out to me a moment ago that the full council issues for tonight, A and B, were initially positioned for the consent agenda, but now we're on full council issues. I don't know if there's a reason or why we end up on full council issues versus if it had been consent in.
That was my bad.
Oh, okay. So, those should be on.
They should have, yeah, I didn't, I failed to see F C. My apologies.
Oh, okay. So, with that, I believe that our Deputy Mayor was referring to AB 2231, which is ordinance D 2231, the Northern Southern City Council, the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, amending the Bonny Lake Comprehensive Plan entitled Bonny Lake 2035, Chapter 1904 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code, and the corresponding portions of ordinance numbers 984, 1123, 1281, 1318, 1424, and 1641, and repeating Attachment A of Chapter 1904 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code, and the corresponding portions of the ordinance numbers 984 and 1199 related to the traffic impact, the funded project list. Since, do we have a motion to put that on the consent agenda?
Make a motion if you move the consent agenda.
And how about AB 2241, ordinance D 2241, Northern Southern City Council, the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, amending Section 1808020 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code, and the corresponding portions of ordinance numbers 1416.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I see you for a minute? Actually, I believe it was Councilmember Swatman said that the transportation one, with the, under full council, that they had some question.
Okay.
And the same with the other one there, too, the self-storage facilities, we didn't want those to go on the consent agenda, so kind of reiterate, maybe we should pull on, if there's an actual motion to put those on to the consent, maybe that should die.
Okay, okay. And I believe that's all we need for that, is.
Would you vote his motion?
Yes. And.
Make a motion to withdraw my motion.
Let's vote it all in favor of drawing a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, my only count, my only comment on that is I had to read the whole thing number.
The numbers included before we got there.
Anyway, now, now, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as it stands? That would be Items A through E on this.
Don't move.
Second. Okay, any discussion on the matters? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, our consent agenda has been adopted. Now, we can move on to our full council issues. Madam Court, did I do a good enough job reading that, or did any of you?
If the council's okay, you did a great job.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, do we have any discussions on, on AB 2231, that's ordinance D 2231?
We need a motion first.
Don't move, mostly approved, seconded.
Okay, do we have any discussions? Okay, Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there was some possible wording in there that is not ultra-clear on what's going on. I wanted to make sure, since all the full council hasn't been able to see that, that they were, got their questions answered on that. This has just been through the committee, it hasn't been the full council workshop or anything, so I don't know if there's any further discussion needed on the matter, but I'm open to questions or comments.
Yeah, oh, Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I had a question earlier, but I met with Jason, and he was able to clarify for me. It was on page 88, and it was just discussing a specific property, and so it didn't have anything to do with my question. So, I don't have a question right now.
Okay. Any further discussion or any, any questions? Okay, we are, it doesn't look like we have any further discussion or questions on this, so we're ready to vote on AB 2231, ordinance D 2231. All right, can we have a motion? Oh, no, we've already moved in second, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. AB 2231, ordinance D 2231, has been adopted by this council. Let's, let's move to Item B. Madam Court, why don't you read that one, I only got a half way through.
This is ordinance D 2241. The council motion would be to amend Section 18.08.020 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code and the corresponding portions of ordinance numbers 1416, 1483, 1520, 1533, 1568, 1584, 1644, 1651, 1657, and 1658 related to self-storage facilities and stationing itself.
Don't move.
Seconded.
Okay, now it's been moved in second. Any discussion on the matter? And that would be, oh, Councilmember McFlimmon.
Yeah, I would make a motion to postpone this until we have a full council. This, this issue regards property rights and the restriction of property rights, and I would prefer that we have the whole council here to load the map so that we understand.
That is a solid point.
And I really want to make, when I say that, I make that motion, but I also want to understand that I really appreciate the work the city's done on this, right, that they've done a good job. But because it is property rights, I think it's appropriate to have the full council here. I know, I know the, the whole council is invested in this topic.
Deputy Mayor, if the council does move to move that, do you think we have room on our next meeting to, I mean, to need a time when we are sure the entire council will be here for that?
And.
I will be at the next council.
Okay.
From today.
Okay. So, we will.
I make a motion to table until we get the full council.
In seconds? Okay, all in favor of tabling Item B on tonight's full council agenda, which would be AB 2241, ordinance D 2241. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nays.
Okay, we have one nay, and I believe, yeah. So, we are moving to, to put this matter four weeks in, so that we do, with the intent of having a full council to be able to.
That's a workshop.
No, that'll be four weeks in, that'll be another City Council meeting. Yeah. Right.
So, the, oh, yes, Mr. Sullivan. Just so I can make sure I have it in my calendar, make sure I get the packet done, so we're talking the August 9th. Are we talking August?
No.
August 23rd?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, I won't be here for that, so y'all get to discuss it, I will. Okay, let's move on to Item D, which would be a motion, it's AB 22104, a motion of the City Council, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Court. Okay, I started, Sullivan said. A motion of the City Council of the City of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, to update the budget FTE employee chart to authorize adding an in-house city attorney to the 2023 slash 2024 budget?
Don't move, seconded.
Okay, are there any discussions on the matter? I, I have none, because I discussed it all last week. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I noticed that Burke was here. So, I have questions on the city attorney versus a contract attorney. I'm just wondering if there is more benefit to having a contract attorney versus a city attorney that we're having to pay full staffing for?
And just for clarity matters, I do not see our contract city attorney in attendance on the, on our Blue Jeans Network as well. That would be Ms. Haggerty, so, Ms. Burke.
All right, thank you. Dina Burke, Deputy City Attorney Prosecutor, for the record. I mean, I think that's the big question to councils, the benefits of contract versus in-house. I know Councilmember Fullerton and I, right before the meeting started, one of the questions was about benefits to staff or, for in-house versus contract. And I know from talking to other cities that have an in-house city attorney, one of the big benefits that both the attorney and other staff members have mentioned is that when any sort of random legal or. when any sort of random legal or legal-ish question comes up, a staff member can go down the hall and ask that attorney a question. And it could be something that is just a gut check, and they don't have to worry about billable hours, you know, attorney's bill in six-minute increments, and, you know, the going rate in various contracts that are currently in place are in the, you know, 250 to 300 plus an hour. Right now, we're looking at 2023, 2024, and prices keep going up. And so, you know, I think realistically, you know, you're looking at potentially upwards of 350 an hour. It could be just for a random question. So the nice thing that when staff knows, hey, it's like, you know, the analogy is getting in a taxi cab, and as soon as you get in that taxi cab, the flag goes down and that you're just starting to get billed. Staff won't worry about asking that random question and bill getting run up, and so it can mean that it voids litigation in the future and it creates a city that's more potentially proactive versus reactive.
Nice to say. But anyway, and for the record, the reason why I said that is that's a term that I use many times less. So anyway, do we have any further discussion or did that answer your question, Councilmember Fullerton?
I have another question, but I'm going to let Councilmember Watson go.
Watson, then Deputy Mayor Fullerton, yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, from the beginning, been forced to have a city attorney, but we can't afford that right now. You came back to us six months from now and said, we just cut $50,000 here, here, and here. That would make sense to me. Right now, we can't afford it. We look at the dollars that Councilman Evans brought forward to us last few years, any more attorney, they're reasonable amounts, and right now, we can afford that. And I think in the near future, we should be able to do that, but right now, we jumped into this right now. Our budget's challenged as it is. I want to pay more rocks on top of our, our bid budget going right now. Though I look forward to you bringing some to us in the future, maybe next year, let me say, okay, we're going to do this, now we've got things figured out, we can afford this, and we should do it, and I'll be all for it. But right now, I'm not for it. I know they could use it, but we don't have the money for it.
Now, it's a point of update, and Councilmember Watson. Now, Councilmember Fullerton, did you have additional questions?
That was actually, my question was kind of piggybacking after, after Councilmember Watson from last week, he said that he would like to consider doing a contract attorney for one year and then go from there and consider an in-house attorney later if we feel like it would benefit because, but the other thing is, if we have a contract attorney, this is directed at you, Ms. Burke, would that, would that contracted attorney be present at the council meetings? Or is that something we would have to write in? Is that going to cost us extra for parliamentary reasons?
So the answer to your question is currently in code that the city's supposed to have the city attorney at council meeting. So, you know, it could be either a flat rate contract or per hour, but either way, if you, if you want an attorney to do something and be present, you're going to pay for it. And I know a lot of cities are even getting charged for travel time if they want a contract attorney present in person.
That technically we have when we haven't had our parliamentary attorney meetings here, holding a legal city council. But seriously, it's, that's part of their jobs here for a city council. Councilmember Evans.
The remote option would still suffice.
Absolutely. Okay. And Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Fullerton.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Would the deputy city vice provision at a council?
Yes.
Okay.
I think timely speaking in the code, the deputy mayor has to excuse the city attorney, the city attorney, I'd have to look up the provision again, but I think there is a way for another attorney to step in.
Or do you have something to bring? And, you know, I've paid attention to this side of the dice. Do we have anybody on this side? Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I know, I would follow along with Councilmember Watson's logic there, and as stated in the previous meeting, you know, we do have a elected city mayor, duly elected people of the city, or well, yourself, things like, obviously by the people. So you're in charge of running the city, and I definitely support that because you were like, so where the rub comes is the budgetary concept of where it is, that's why I'm along the line with Mr. Watson. I think the way you want to run the city is whatever you need, if you need 20 lawyers and, and super super council. Whatever it is, then, then that's the way that you need to run the city, but that's wrapped up in a budget proposal. I don't like it when we do things vertically in the individual, because it's clearly a good idea. It's, there's nothing wrong with having, you know, more legal advice. It's hard to go wrong with advice to identify risks. That's always a good thing. But it's in the, under the concept of running frugal city and making sure that we're applying an undue burden of tax. So I currently, you know, I'm not going to support this particular thing, but boy, you know, if you can show me a budget and how you do your organization that fits and it doesn't cost the people a significant amount of money, art provides value that you see that there's a great risk out there, but that's part of the market. Currently, I'm, I'm just saying, no.
Well, for the record, Councilmember Swatman, if I walked into a room, I'll point where he's, I turn over. You never know. Councilmember Evans.
As an advocate for taxi drivers here.
It's a human.
Either, either. You're not paying for a car that's sitting in your driveway or.
I do believe that Councilmember Fullerton brought up a salient point to Ms. Ryerson, who's the Chief Financial Officer, here about the budget when it comes to that. It seems like the council may be leaning towards not voting this FTE in tonight, but they are looking at within this budget cycle over the next two years, perhaps adding that. Would that be something that is feasible?
We can always do a budget amendment.
Okay, good. That's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, do we have any, any further discussion? Councilmember Fullerton, you have a side on it?
I concur with Councilmember.
Okay, very good. Okay, are we ready to take two votes? Okay, all in favor of, well, let me read it in the record. First, AB 22104, a motion of the city council of the city of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, to update the budget FTE employee chart to authorize adding in an in-house city attorney to the 2023, 2024 budget. All in favor, say aye. All, any nays?
None.
Okay, so we have unanimous nays with the six-member council here, so it's a, yeah, six, zero without the Councilmember Fullerton being against it. All right. Oh, this is what, there is no executive or closed session and seeing no more are adjourned. Thank you very much. Yes, I know. Oh, that's wonderful.